All right. The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to order. We will have an invocation by Councilman James Fleury and Councilman Nicholson will lead us, would you please? Stand, please.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come today with grateful hearts. We thank you, oh Lord, for the seasons that we enjoy and that we know cooler weather will be coming forward. But we thank you for the rain yesterday, the little bit that we got. We pray for this great city, the mayor, the staff, and all of the employees that work every day to provide the services. Go and guide and protect them, oh Lord, and protect our firemen, our policemen. And Lord, be with each council member here as we go to serve with our hearts trying to do what's best for this great city. Now forgive us of our sin, oh Lord. We repent and ask forgiveness for it's in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
[inaudible 00:00:37]
[inaudible 00:00:38] The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call it over?
Councilman Rappert. Councilwoman Fuller.
Present.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Busher.
Here.
Councilman Thor.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
And Councilman Vol.
Here.
Tomorrow, entertain a motion for the minutes, to approve the minutes from August 12th and August 13th meeting. Does any council member have any recognitions or distinguished guests at this time? Councilman Busher.
I would like to have Shane Sharkey from Playball Shreveport come up and chit chat with us a little bit.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. What I'm here to share with you is just kind of the work that we've done for Playball Shreveport over the last year and a half. And hopefully it'll be able to have some insight in the direction that you want to go with Fairgrounds Stadium, whether you decide to renovate the stadium or whether you decide to go ahead and demolish the stadium for future development. Our mission was to reclaim Fairgrounds Field to serve as a multipurpose stadium for the community and which actually matches up with the original plans for the stadium whenever it was built. You can see, that's the cover page for the stadium right there. What we could do is with the stadium is to make it a multi-sports complex for baseball, softball, volleyball, and also for lacrosse. And by doing that, that would provide revenue streams to also, to pay for the reclamation of the stadium and also provide operating funds to continue with the stadium as well. Would be able to host both men's and women's sporting events there and be able to provide an environment to be able to do community outreach and with through the sports, have a sports outreach program as well. Some of the stated reasons as far as why the stadium needs to demolish and some of the things that we're going to share with you today that might be able to provide some insights is that the stadium is prone to flooding, there's bat infestation, it's structurally unsound, it's non-compliant with bathrooms as far as an ADA standard, and also it's not financially, it has no financial benefit to the community. The first issue that we're going to address is the flooding. I have Cullen Sharkey. Cullen is a geology student at Centenary College. Him along with Dr. Beeler in the geology department has analyzed the area to determine what the flooding is. I'm gonna let Cullen come up and just present that for you.
Thank you for having me. One of the first things that I noticed whenever I was doing my research project was where was the water coming from? As you can see on one of the charts, the elevation of the land itself has a downward slope from the northeast corner to the southwest corner. Two parts that we saw was a big problem was in part of the field, the water actually starts to run into the dugout. And so when we were looking at that third base locker room, we saw that there's a natural dip right where the locker room is. So a lot of water is being pulled up right there and it's just staying there and seeping into the locker room. The only drainage is a drainage system that's currently there, that's a part of the field drainage. And so with all that debris and waste kind of clogging up that pipe, there's been a lot of flooding in that area. So the way that the field drainage is currently designed is it's in two parts. You have your third base dugout drainage system connects to the whole third base side of drainage which moves all the water north, as well as the first base side which moves it south. The first base side barely has any drainage, any flooding problems at all because the drainage is going with the elevation as you can see. However, that third base side is going against elevation and so all your water is just being pushed back up where more water is coming into it. So the solution to the flooding would be if we added some drainage systems from the city around the outside of the stadium, whether it be digging deeper ditches or however that would be solved. And actually having a drainage system that runs parallel to the elevation to where you're not having all this backup of water that's holding all of it into that third base side. So even if, you know, whatever you decide to do with it, that situation of that water just pulling in needs to be resolved either way. Thank you for having me.
The next situation that we addressed was as far as the bat cleanup. Right now, there's an estimation of around forty thousand bats in the stadium, just kind of up from last year through the mating of the bats. And we, what we have done as far as, you know, to be able to handle the cleanup is we contacted one of the top bat control companies in the country. And Kevin Kioski with United Bat Control is here. Kevin's company is stationed out of California, does a lot of work in East Texas area, currently finishing up jobs in Tyler, Texas. Kevin's here. If y'all have any specific questions that you want to ask them, if you want to ask him now or after, whichever one would be best for you. Anyone?
Mr. Sharkey, my name is Chair. What is the estimate for removing the bats?
Yeah, Kevin, you want to come up and just kind of address that?
At this point, what we did is we provided an assessment of the stadium and we, that was for the remediation of the bats, also to have the stadium bat-proofed and sealed in the proper cleanup and disposal of the hazardous waste, which would be the guano. That came with a multi-year warranty, five-year warranty, and that was, I believe, like $254,000, which included all the manpower, lifts, man lifts, scissor lifts, basically everything would be involved.
Are these bats protected as an endangered species under federal law?
There are twelve different species in Louisiana of bats. Four of those species are protected. So they can't be, obviously because of that, they can't be destroyed, but they have to be properly excluded during certain times of the year.
And whatever you intend to do to solve the bat problem will not run afoul of the Endangered Species Act?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
And Kevin, can I address any questions too along the way? If the choice is to demolish the stadium for future development, he'd be a good sounding board as far as like, how do you protect the city from legal actions by not handling the eradication of the bats during the proper season or in the proper manner? One of the other issues as far as the reason why the stadium should be demolished is that it's structurally unsound. One of the very first things that we did over a year and a half ago, so we have really, this has been a long process that we've done in order to make an assessment on the stadium and see if it's feasible for us to convert it to a multipurpose stadium for the community. And one of the first things that we want, I have a background in real estate, was to make sure that the foundation, that the property is structurally sound. Sam Vanny, who's a general construction supervisor for one of the largest employers in the area, he's responsible for renovations to major hospitals in the area and also building cancer treatment centers in several different medical facilities in the area, went in initially and checked out the structure to make sure it was structurally sound. Sam's assessment is it's built with reinforced concrete, it's built to last. There were issues as far as you can see with some of the metals, steps and everything to go to the upper decks and everything like that, which were rusted out, which definitely need to be replaced. But as far as the actual structure itself is sound, had the pleasure of talking to Taylor Moore, former owner of the Shreveport Captains, who was on initial, involved with the initial phases of the construction of the stadium and also his name is on the blueprints, right? So you want to speak to that guy? And he just reiterated that, you know, whenever they built the stadium, they wanted to build it to last. They didn't want the same things that happened at the old Spar Stadium to happen at the new stadium at Fairgrounds Field. Again, most of the renovations that would be needed to be done with the stadium would be primarily cosmetic and mechanical, and we estimate those to be around anywhere between five and seven million on the high side on renovations, which we would take care of through private donations and also raising grant money. But as far as the structures, you know, it's built very soundly. Another issue is the bathrooms, making sure that they ADA compliant. And that is a big issue. And, you know, there are some short-term solutions to it as far as to make sure that the bathrooms do meet standards. And one of the creative ways is just kind of do what they did in Hirsch Coliseum is, you know, instead, limit the seating capacity, reduce the seating capacity in order to get closer to that mark, but also you'd have to go in after you raise the money to make sure that those bathroom facilities, the locker rooms, the press box and all that area do meet ADA compliance. As far as the field renovations, there'd be two different opportunities to do field renovations. Our plan is to turf the facility. The reason why we would turf it, it would just be easier to transition between sports to sport with just having a removable mound and being able to bring in fencing in order to accommodate youth in AAA baseball in the stadium and convert it from softball to baseball. So those are some of the things that we could do. If the money was not available readily, then what we can do is, we've had several different companies, guys, we live in an amazing community, you know, with so many people who are wanting to help and wanting to see an improvement and, you know, just lend whatever they can, whether it's their equipment, whether it's their employees, or whether it's their own services in order to it. If we kept it a grass field, we've been approached by a Shreveport Rugby Club in order to, a possible playing field for them as well and to be able to host larger tournaments for them. But, you know, rugby's rough, rugby's rough, you know? Would not want to ever play it, even in my prime, but there's just some health issues as far as them playing on artificial turf. But those are the two options. Primarily, the main focus would be on turf in the field where we could actually do advertising on the field level, on the turf, and then also being able to handle a lot of the drainage things that Cullen brought up as far as the backflow of water in the area. And as far as community support, you know, we've had a lot of support in order for the renovation of the stadium. And it's one of those amazing things that a lot of times, things start with vision. They don't necessarily start with money or you being able to specifically be the talented one that be able to get the job done. It's casting a vision of what's possible. And for us, that possibility of a vision was not just a multipurpose stadium, but it was what that facility could do. And what that facility could do as far as reaching kids and having a place for them to come and have sports and be able to connect in with like a larger group, to be part of a team and to have strong men and women pouring into their lives. And that really resounded with a lot of people. And you can kind of see, you know, that number as far as with Playball Shreveport on our Facebook page, that's an old number, we actually over forty-three hundred, which we thought was great because that's past the seating capacity of the stadium. And you could kind of just see from a recent survey that was done by Kiel Radio what they thought as far as, you know, tearing down the stadium or not. But, you know, sometimes that comes with limited information. When we started, we didn't know that there were other people who were interested in the stadium or that there were other proposed things that the stadium could be used for a positive economic impact. All we knew is that we saw a stadium, God spoke to us, gave us a message as far as what we needed to do, and then we just followed what we felt was led on our heart to build, to be able to reclaim the stadium in order to put it to good use for the community. Something that the city of Shreveport would be really proud of. And, you know, it's not just Shreveport, it's the region, right? Because Shreveport's an amazing hub of activity and it draws a lot of people from rural areas which work in Shreveport, they play ball, they send their kids to school here and those sort of things. You know, and we've even had as far as ability to raise money with the support of Louisiana Tech and with Melissa Dobson over at the Innovation Department there. So the biggest thing is just, we just wanted to share with you what we've been working on over a year and a half, just to be able to, whether you make the decision to that the stadium no longer needs to exist or whether you want to remodel the stadium, that you just have the information that we've been able to gather over time. But always, I just really want to encourage you to just, whatever you decide to do, replace it with something that can benefit the kids. That's a picture up there of what's called Huntington Day. And several years ago, Loyola College Prep was playing Huntington High School in baseball. Huntington had about ten players, their catcher's mitt broke, they didn't have but one bat, they didn't have enough helmets to go around, and one of the players was actually a girl and she had to go home early before it got dark. And that really resonated with the coach at Loyola at the time, Dusty Griffiths. And Dusty instituted what was called Huntington Day where Huntington High School came over to Loyola's facilities. The seniors at Loyola would coach them up along with the coaching staff at Loyola. And it created a bond between the two teams. And that's one of the pictures of one of the first Huntington Days that there are. Now Huntington has over thirty players and there's a strong bond between those two teams. It transcends socioeconomic backgrounds, transcends race, because they don't care. They just all want to be part of the same team and they share a common love for baseball. I just want to, just encourage you, I'm just a guy that God spoke to and gave a message to, and we took that message and tried to be able to use a facility that we thought was not going to have any economic use in the area to bring it back to life. But I just want to encourage you that if it is that you need to move forward and demolish the stadium for something different, I know that God has something bigger and better and that we just, please, just keep that as an opportunity to always look forward to the future. Thank you. Also, just really quickly, you were giving out some economic impact information, just kind of, Kelly may come up if you wanted to, to explain that. It just kind of shows you that SWAC had an interest in hosting their conference championship there, and those are some economic information from SWAC Conference as far as how it'd benefit the city. If you flip over a couple of pages, there's an event for the Red River Athletic Adult Baseball League, hosting a tournament there and what the economic numbers would be for that. And then the last set of numbers was if you'd host a youth baseball event, what the economic impact would be that. That would just be for a single event. We thought that we could host about twenty, twenty events at Fairgrounds Field, ten for baseball, five for softball, five for lacrosse, and five for soccer. And that just shows you what the impact is there. So we thought the total impact would be somewhat roughly around 1.5 million initially. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Busher.
Shane, thank you for your dedication to this project. I think that just having, you know, business leaders and residents that are interested in saving what some people call NISOR is, you know, is remarkable in Shreveport. And I know this started way before this council and way before this administration, actually. So, you know, whatever happens, one of the concerns that I've heard is, you know, do you have the money to rehab it? I mean, do you feel confident that you have that money available, the five million that you mentioned? Do you have those funds? I mean, can you get your hands on those funds? Do you think, and I know it's problematic to say, okay, well, we're going to go out and start doing fundraisers, but we don't have a lease for the building yet.
Correct.
So, I mean, but do you feel like you have the commitment to get that money?
Yes, sir. I mean, the one thing that we wanted to be, we had a lot of people that wanted to give us money in the very beginning. And the one thing that we didn't want to do is accept donations that if something happened to where we weren't able to get the lease, that somehow we'd have to give that money back. And if we went through a GoFundMe account or a change.org account, there was no way that we can make those people whole. But we have a huge ground movement of people who want to contribute to Fairgrounds Field. The other thing is the commitment from Melissa Dobson and Louisiana Tech as far as helping us, as far as raising money through grants and things like that. Would we be able to get the money like all at one time? No, it would take time.
Well, I think that my concern, just with this, and I'm, you know, I've said this on the record before, I like your idea, my concern is I would hate for us to enter into a lease and not see any progress at all when we could do something with the property for economic development. But I do think that you've got momentum. I've followed your Facebook page and I do think you have momentum. And I think that, I think that your heart's in the right place for this and the people that are involved are in the right place for this. So, like you said, it's in God's hands, whatever's going to happen with it. But, you know, for me, I would like for somebody to have an opportunity to do what you're willing to do with that.
I just, just one other thing, just to wrap up, because, you know, there's a lot of people that have an emotional attachment to the stadium and some of them are pretty fiery, you know? But the last thing that we want to do, I was fortunate to speak to Mayor Perkins this morning, is we don't want to be obstructionist to the bond initiative and we don't want to be controversial or anything like that. People should vote for the bond based on the whole of the bond, that if it's good for the police department and good for the fire department and good for sewage in the city, and they feel as citizens of Shreveport that they need to vote for it, they don't need to let a stadium be in the way. Does that make sense?
I agree 100% with what you're saying.
So, so whatever the Shreveport decides to do or whatever happens, you know, it happens and I just got to trust in God that there's something better that he has in store.
Well, thank you again.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. Come back, we weren't done with you. We have more questions for you.
I'm sorry.
You mentioned a lot about at-risk youth. What kind of needs assessment have you done for the youth that you want to work with and the youth that you think you'll be able to help?
You know, yeah, the crazy thing is just like drugs impact our kids so much. And you don't have to do a study or anything like that, you can just open up your eyes and look around and it's-
Yeah, but when we're talking about how things are funded, it's going to be about a return on investment either from the community that's granting you their funding or any other funds that you're able to incur. So those numbers do matter. Do you have any research about the needs assessments or about the other community organizations that you'd be wanting to work with or how they're using sports currently to reach the same kids that you say have this need?
We've just been able to reach out to different churches and also to the YMCA. We talked to them, fellowship of Christian athletes who are already doing work in that area. We were just going to provide them with another facility that they can work out of.
So-
And then we also had coaches and retired Major League Baseball players who were going to go in and volunteer their time to do clinics and camps at Fairgrounds Field and different baseball organizations that would go in and help do free camps and things like that.
You see, all that sounds really nice and it's very, it's all well-meaning, but have you pinpointed any other locations where those needs could be met currently within our community? So like be able to prove that you wouldn't be duplicating your current resource that we already have and might not even be used in a capacity?
I just knew we weren't going to ask the city for any money.
I get that.
And by not asking the city for money-
Right, I appreciate that too, but if we're going to talk about how we're going to be meeting a need, we need to see what that need is.
Yes, sir.
And we should not just be able to show the money that we're going to be able to raise. Like when we do stuff, a lot of times, even if we aren't asking for money, don't have a check in front of us, I'm like quick to, I'm pretty consistent about this. Do you have a memorandum of understanding? Do you have any kind of written notice or pledge from people that they're going to actually give you the money to show us that you're close to where you need to be for this lease and to get the work done? Because it's clearly a lot of work that needs to be done. But the other side of that is, let me show you the basic numbers, let me show you where the research says that these particular sports have a positive outcome on the at-risk youth that you say you want to help, and here are the percentages of at-risk youth that we do need to help. All of that's very helpful with making a case for something like this, especially when we're looking at the return on investment of just having that be flattened out, even though right now, I'm not particularly sure that I'm for that particular thing, but I'm open-minded about it. But if we're going to talk about a million dollars so that we can go ahead and remediate the bats, clear that out and give someone a chance to do something brand new, or the wait-and-see game, when we don't even know what that value was going to be back to us, it's really important to have that data. I just wanted to put that out there for you.
Thank you.
But I appreciate, I appreciate that your heart's in the right place.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fuller. Councilman Green.
Thank you. I'd just like to say congratulations to you for having this effort and what has happened over the weekend, that Louisiana is not only the champions of the world, but they are international champions of baseball.
Yes, sir.
And that just thrilled my heart and I'd just like to congratulate you. So, you know, whatever I can do to help, then I'm willing to do it because we now hold both titles in the state of Louisiana. And I have his offer to all of those players and all of the people. And I'm sure somebody started with an idea like yours to bring these kids together and they've done a great job.
Yes, sir.
And I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Councilman Green. My, well, I was up next, but I, I'm sorry, Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Sharkey, thank you for being here and thank you and everybody involved with Playball Shreveport for all the effort that you've put into this over the past eighteen months. My understanding of what you were proposing to the city is that you want to rehab Fairgrounds Field, which the city over the past thirty-five years has spent about four and a half million dollars to construct and maintain at zero cost to the city, right?
Yes, sir.
So if Shreveport were to enter into a deal with you, we wouldn't spend any money on this project, we would just give you a lease, you would raise private dollars and whatever you're able to do with those dollars, we would all benefit from. Is that right?
The only thing that, that, you know, was identified, especially with speaking with the department, the city's engineering department, and some of the problems like that Cullen mentioned earlier with the flooding and everything, was just things that the city should do as far as, for that area, to address some of the flooding things where Public Works could be involved with deepening out ditches and running things like that. But as far as within the stadium, the media area around the stadium, installing French drains and things like that to move the water away from there and renovate it, we, those things we would take care of.
I'll say that if the decision were between spending one million dollars to demolish Fairgrounds Field and spending seven or more million dollars of public money to renovate the stadium, I wouldn't be inclined to spend seven million dollars that the city of Shreveport doesn't have right now on Fairgrounds Field. But I do hope that my colleagues in the administration will give full consideration to your proposal before we destroy or demolish an asset for some future economic development opportunity. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, two of my, two of my questions was already asked, so I appreciate it. Mayor Perkins.
Yeah, Mr. Sharkey, I just wanted to thank you for clearly your love for Fairgrounds Field. I'm sure everybody up here today shares their same love and all the work you've put in thus far on it. Really enjoyed the meeting this morning.
Yes, sir.
And even the analysis that you've provided to us for free on just improvements of that area overall helps. But just to reiterate some points from the meeting this morning, we've been talking to several entities from, you know, sports leagues to entertainment developers about that particular property, and in every single conversation, it always comes up demolition. You know, as soon as they do an analysis of it, it's always, all right, well, we'll have to demolish it and move forward from there. So, you know, demolition is a part of all those conversations and as I told you, if you raise five million dollars and the city handles the one million demolition part, that five million can go towards building something new. Whatever your vision is for that place, it helps, it's not to prohibit you. As far as given land leases, though, the city has to be extremely careful with that, right? We don't want to get into, it's a chicken and egg problem. We don't want to get into the business of handing out land leases and expecting people to raise private funds rather than them already having private funds on hand and then coming to us for land leases. I'd rather we continue the precedent that we have with it. So there's nothing personal with this. And like I said, we love the Fairgrounds Field as much as anybody else, but we got to make sure that we're being very diligent with the city of Shreveport's property and making sure we're setting ourselves up for success. But we look forward to working with you in the future, you know, and raising that capital.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. Were you considering running this as a nonprofit?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's all I had, thank you.
That's the only economic model that works. That, that's the only economic model that works. Early on, we looked at, Kelly was very helpful as far as, you know, bringing in a, a together group of people. We call it like a sports council to look at if, if we could use people that go and invest in the stadium. But the overall consensus is if the, if the stadium's been sitting, it was too much of a financial risk. Because as far as like the stadium just sitting for so long with no activity on it.
Right.
And that's when we looked at different solutions and that's where we came up with the nonprofit solution.
Instead of where the dealmaker or deal breaker is, if we're able to like create some flat land that someone can come in and purchase and create something revenue generating, then that's a bigger win for us as a city.
That's just something y'all have to decide.
All right, thank you.
No shortage of flat land in Shreveport, Mr. Sharky.
There's a lot of parking space there.
Yeah. We're talking about what the city owns, though, if the city could live without it.
All right, let's see, Councilwoman Fuller? Okay. Did you have someone else you wanted to? I thought you had somebody else to come up, okay.
If you would like to ask Kevin about anything or, or if Kelly would like to come up and answer anything as far as from the Sports Commission, or if you want to speak with Kevin as far as, you know, if there was a demolition, what steps you need to go to. I mean, the guy's here. He's handled via hospitals, universities. I mean, he's the guy that would be able to answer any questions right now while he's here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. John Stettl.
John Stettl for Tealwood. First of all, I am a baseball fan. This is a vintage cap from the Swamp Dragons. And I also like to look at facts and not look through rose-tinted glasses. I commend this group for their vision. I heard this presentation last year before Mayor Tyler. And to date, this is what I've learned, that no money's been raised, even though money could have been put in an escrow account and people signing off saying they didn't expect to get interest, that we're trying to build a facility, spend five to $7 million when you could construct a facility for that amount of money, that would probably be more pragmatic for the goals. That we have an independent stadium that can have soccer and rugby could be there. And we also have two colleges with two great baseball fields. We hadn't been to Centenary or amounted to LSU, fantastic fields. If the SWAC wanted to have a, a conference championship here, I think we have facilities for it. We have a, a bowl coming up that doesn't have a sponsor for next year. And I think this is a great idea, but it's sat there for 18 months and the stadiums have gone down. I rode yesterday out to Monk House and came back looking at the scenery on both sides. And it is an eyesore. And I used to be a season ticket holder when it first opened at Fairgrounds Field. It's as old as the mayor or about. And I had box seats, you know? And I got tired of going out in the heat because I could go home and watch it. And I got tired of trying to get my friends to go because I had four seats. And then I had children and I just didn't get to go as much. But it is an eyesore. And I rode around it yesterday and it's an eyesore. If this group has the money, and I hope they can raise it, I'm sure there's facilities around, flat ground around, that could build a very good facility that would be appropriate for their needs. Not a 4,200-seat stadium, not dugouts and dressing rooms. Go over to Preston and look at all those baseball fields. For all ages, from T-ball to high school, they have permanent restroom facilities. They have a permanent concession stand. And I, it's a great idea, but we need to move forward. And if that property is demolished, then if they have $5 to $7 million in their pocketbook, I feel sure that they could build an appropriate facility for what they really need. I hate to be the bad guy, but like Mr. Nicholson, when you practice law, you, you look at facts, not dreams. And I look at facts. I do commend their efforts. I do commend the statement that they don't want the bond issue to be decided by this. But I don't think that their project is economically feasible or at least there's been no real progress in the, where it really counts, the pocketbook. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stettl. Any other council member?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to clarify on the record. I was born well before the stadium was built. It was built, it was built in 86, I was born in 85, so.
All right. Mayor Perkins, you had any other announcements or?
I do. I, I would be missed today to, to not acknowledge someone. For those of you who are regular attendees at this meeting, something might feel a bit amiss. And it did to me two weeks ago at the, well, at the previous council meeting, I think it was two weeks ago. But there was a Monday meeting and Mr. Cedric Murphy wasn't in attendance. So, again, I felt, I immediately noticed his presence wasn't here. So after the meeting, I actually sent him a message and I said, you know, Cedric, is everything all right? I didn't see you at council meeting today, you know, just missed you, just checking on you. So he responds back and he tells me, you know, yeah, I'm fine, the, the weather's kinda getting to me, but I'll see you at council tomorrow. And he was at the council meeting the next day. Sadly, Cedric passed on the next day after, after the council meeting. I, I mean, I, words can't express how much of an impact he's had on not just these meetings, but our community overall. It's a huge loss for Shreveport. It's a huge loss for the disabled community, for such a fierce fighter that they had. They continued to fight week in and week out for, you know, equal protections and equal rights for, for the disabled around us. And he did it with so much class. So I just wanna acknowledge Cedric Murphy and all that he did for the city of Shreveport and just say that, you know, he'll be dearly missed. We appreciate him. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I wanted to add real quick on, on, on Mr. Murphy. I just, you said with class. Now, at, at one time Cedric acted like he was a bully to me. Because he told me if I didn't take his phone calls and do what he wanted me to do, that he was gonna reach out to Jerry May and to, and to others of the, of the media to make sure that I, I had a good understanding of who he was and what he was capable of doing. So I appreciate those messages from Cedric at that time. I didn't want to say that.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
The real Mr. Green, step up, please. Anyone have any questions or concerns relative to property standards pertaining to?
Mr. Green, we talked about a yard that entered Block O'Linder, like the intersection line. You told me you'd look into that and I appreciate that.
So I appreciate you for the work that was done up on Seventy, West Seventy. Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. I, I lit up y'all's email last week. Thank you for responding to everything. I think the biggest issue we've got right now that I get a lot of, a lot of, oh, sorry. I was gonna make a little thing about your cellphone just now. But I've heard a lot about Wilkinson and Fairfield, that one house. Can you give a brief summary of what's going on with that?
Uh, not right now.
It's, it's that much.
But I'll, I'll get you one.
So you, well, I kinda know what's going on, but it's, it's enough, but you are aware of it, basically. I know, I get a lot of, a lot of emails and phone calls and Facebook tags about that one. But thank you for, for staying on top of this stuff when we send it to you.
Okay. You're very welcome. All right, thank you, Mr. Green. So, we should allow, yeah, we got that. So, public hearing tomorrow, Mr. Thompson, am I correct on that? I'm sorry, well, Mr., well, I'll let people look over. Ms. Tanya, do we have a public hearing tomorrow? Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
On 101, 102 and 104, 104.
104, also. All right, Mrs. Jones, will there be legislation added tomorrow?
No, we're not aware of any.
All right, we have the following request to speak.
Sed Johnson.
Hello, hello. Hello, how y'all doing? Hey, I'm here today to talk about 3,008 West Seventy Street.
Is that your address, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and I was coming here today because.
I don't play playground stands with Quip, I never heard the address.
3,008.
3,008 West Seventy Street. I was coming here today due to my water bill. In 2018 of December, I kinda closed my, my business down. And I went to work out of town for about four or five months and I came back and my water, it was like 28,000 gallons worth of water was gone and, and my bill is a thousand dollars. So I think somebody kinda just stole my water because I think my faucet is outside my building and I think they've been using it. So I came up here and tried to speak with somebody about it and they said that it's just kinda like, there's nothing they can do. It's up to me, you know, to pay the bill because it ran through my meter. So, you know, we average about four to 10 gallons a month and it jumped up to 28,000, so. I'm able to close my business down because I'm not gonna pay a thousand dollars of water bill when we, I had no, no way or form of knowing how it ran up that much. So I'm just coming here asking you guys if you guys can kinda think about it and see if y'all guys can help me with this. So I'm able to close my business.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Green, can you talk?
Yes, sir. I, I talked to Mr. Johnson today, first speaking to him and I asked him to come today. And Mr. Mayor, I would ask that if you could get somebody from your staff to do an investigation with him, I really would appreciate it. And he was just grateful with me, giving him the opportunity to come to speak about it. And I found that in what he was talking about, that he was very sincere. And so I, I would ask that if you could see what they could do. He said he had talked to several people and they were very rude to him. And I just thought that that's not how we handle business, so I asked him to come.
Yeah, no, absolutely, Councilman. Yeah, we have, Jeffrey from our Water and Sewer Department is here and he can speak to you directly about anything that we can do on our end to kinda help you with it. We're super pro-business here, my administration, so if there's any way we can help you keep the doors open, then we'll, we'll do so.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Councilwoman Fuller?
Oh, no, that must have been old.
So, okay.
Ms. Chrissy Coyle Riesby.
Hello, everyone, good afternoon. I'm Chrissy Coyle Riesby and this is Patty Farrell. And we are just here this afternoon to talk to you guys about a little issue. We live in a neighborhood that backs up to Seabuckham Dixon Park and I'm not sure if you guys.
Give us your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, 7307 Old River Drive.
Thank you very much.
You bet. And we live on a waterway that backs up to Seabuckham Dixon Park, which is an oxbow of the Red River, as many of you guys know. And so, Ms. Patty just passed around a group of pictures whenever you guys get a chance, if y'all can kinda glance at those. This is what our waterway used to look like. It was beautiful, it was, it's really a Shreveport landmark. I grew up going to Seabuckham Dixon Park. People stop by our neighborhood all the time and talk about how they have, they used to ride their horses back there. It's just an absolutely beautiful, beautiful place. So this is how Seabuckham Dixon Park Waterway normally looks like over the past, well, since I lived there. Well, about, I would say about a year, year and a half ago, we started having problems with giant salvinia. And so we in the neighborhood took it in our own hands to try to combat this ourselves. We bought a big sprayer. We have several residents in our neighborhood spraying, as you guys can see. This is Dr. Jack Farrell spraying in this picture, just doing anything and everything we can and paying for it out of our neighborhood fund, out of our HOA fund. Well, with the awful, awful heat that we've had this summer, it has turned into what looks more like a big giant pasture, y'all. And it is just so disheartening, A, that this Shreveport landmark has, has turned into more of an eyesore over the past several months, the past year. And it's just covered, as you can see in the pictures, in giant salvinia. You know, dozens of people used to enjoy this waterway on a daily basis. We'll look out in our backyards and see kayakers and boaters and fishermen out there catching fish. And we have kind of, over the past year and a half, we feel like we have contacted everyone from Red River Specialties about what they can, about renting stuff from them. Like I mentioned, we've sprayed ourselves. Right now, the park is owned by the city and we know that it's going to Wildlife and Fisheries. But we're in a crunch right now because it's in the middle. So we were trying to just get quotes to get an aerial sprayer, an airboat to come and spray, to hopefully put a dent in some of this, what looks like a pasture, so then we can use our little boat that our neighborhood has made to spray and keep it under control. So really, what we would like from, from, from the council is we would really just like for you guys to help foot us, help us foot the bill on this, you know, this city land that we have.
What, do you have an estimate of the cost of this?
One, at Red River Specialist, an aerial fly, he said 84, 80 to 84 acres were involved. And it was between $80 and $100 an acre to spray. We are working on some others. I've been in touch with the people at Cross Lake who take care of that and it's a company out of Houston. And so we are right in the process now of getting that. But there's no point in us going to all this trouble if we don't have permission to spray.
Well, y'all sound like you know more about the transition than I do. But my recollection is that we, we leased this park to the federal government.
It has not finalized.
Is that at least not effective yet, Ms. Jones, or do you know?
It's not totally effective.
Shelley, can you just?
Shelley, can you get some details?
Yeah, Shelley, can you?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I, I've been in communications all last week and Ms. Regal has been in communications back. I don't know exactly who in your neighborhood are talking to each other, but we've been kinda going back and forth in emails. And I think Friday, Ms. Regal sent out a, an email. So I'll, I'll let her kinda tell y'all where we're at.
How are you doing? Good to see you. Yes, we've been, the giant salvinia problem, we're very well aware of. We've been working with Wes in Environmental Affairs about spraying. He has been in contact with Wildlife and Fisheries about spraying for us. They are looking at aerial spraying. We're having to get permission to do that. That's not something you can just do. So we are working on that. We have not finalized because it hasn't been signed in Washington yet. They take way longer to do things than we do. And as soon as that's signed, it'll be here for the mayor's signature. In the meantime, we're working with Pat Stinson at, at the Refuge, talking, you know, back and forth. He's trying to help also. So we are aware of the problem. We have, Wildlife and Fisheries had told us they would come in and spray when they finish the rest of their spraying. So we are working on it. I think that's the email I sent to you. But Chris, I'd be more than happy to work with you guys and see if we can figure out a way to, to get it taken care of and keep y'all updated on what we're doing.
We actually had Wildlife and Fisheries came this morning to spray, but it's so bad, the boat launch to get in, I guess salvinia that's been there, they couldn't get their boat into this area. So it's like every time we think we're getting a leg up on this, it comes down again. And so we're just like, what do we do now? Which is why we came to you guys.
You know, I, I got an email about it. Mayor and your husband spoke to me about it one night and he came up to me and said, hey, it's bad. And I said, yeah, I could tell it looks like it's creeping up. And then some emails started and there was a, you know, several, several emails. I think the mayor's office was involved and Ms. Regal was involved in it. And I feel real hopeful at the, in the last emails we got on Friday, that, that something's gonna be done about it. So it, it's definitely not something that, that we're shoving under. I think it's just, it's just getting the approval through the aerial and I'll be 100% behind that if, if need be.
It does double every seven days. So that's our problem.
It's bad.
It's, it's bad. And so every, like every five to seven days. And so every, like, every five to seven days, I think it doubles. So that's why we're like, time is of the essence here. And we know it takes, there's a process through everything. But it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
This is six weeks.
But thank you both so much. And Ms. Farrell, it's nice to see you. I gave you your email on this yesterday, which I just saw. Hadn't responded to yet. But we'll do everything that we can to push this forward. But I'm confident, best thing what Ms. Regal said, that she's working through the process for us.
And we'll keep you informed. Y'all have like a Facebook page or anything for your neighborhood?
We do not. We kind of didn't want to advertise.
I got you. We've got, I mean, I've got several people that have been on this email that we've been communicating back and forth with. So as soon as I get some information, or Ms. Regal does, we'll share it with you.
Okay, well, I'll speak with Shelley right now outside and just see if we can, yeah, if you guys can just... Any help would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leah Kerr.
After she comes, then we'll have Stacy. You all can come up after.
Hello, my name is Leah Marie Kerr. And thank you for having me here today, giving me the opportunity to speak. I am the founder of a nonprofit program called Fly Financial Literacy Youth and Immigrant Empowerment. I am from Chino, California. I am a new resident here, so I really wanted to take the time to introduce myself.
Welcome to Shreveport. Will you tell us your address, please?
Thank you.
Your address?
Oh, my address. It's 3000 Sanford Street Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109.
That sounds right. Thanks.
And so what I wanted to share with you today is that in the state of California, they are not required to teach personal financial literacy. I will give you the brief breakdown of the levels of requirements. One is to be offered as an elective. Another required as a course. Another required as a course to graduate. And the other is required to be in standardized testing. And so California is one of the five states that is not required to have any kind of requirement to have as a course or an elective to graduate, and it's not in the standardized testing. I researched that in the state of Louisiana, you guys are required to have the personal financial education as a requirement. Let me just jump to my notes here. So, yeah, that would be Louisiana laws, revised statutes, Title 17, Education RS 17, colon 282.3, Personal Financial Education. The legislature recognizes that young people must obtain the skills and knowledges, knowledge and experience necessary to manage their personal finance. I will just read off a little bit about the goals of the program that I have. I'm not quite yet a 501(c)(3), but I am working on becoming a 501(c)(3). The mission of Fly is to set aside political views to unite as Americans to promote financial literacy awareness to as many cities and communities of all income levels across the nation, beginning in Chino, California, where I'm from. Financial literacy is the ability to know the basics of personal finance and be able to apply them based on your needs and not when someone advises. Our goal is to help promote individuals to discover what financial instruments work best for them by establishing their wants and needs by following a budget. Secondly, prepare citizen applicants with a better understanding of financial terms, process, and instruments in the order to achieve personal finance.
Ms. Kerr.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you for coming. Your time has expired, as Councilman Flair has noted. But if you haven't had contact with the school board, I think that would also be another body to address this to, since the council doesn't have authority over the education, at least of children. But personal financial literacy is a good goal for everybody.
Yes, absolutely, especially immigrants and new people that come to this country. And that's what I would like to do today, is just introduce myself to the council and the citizens of Shreveport. It is very nice to meet you, and I'm very happy to be a new Shreveport citizen. And also, my goal is to also reach out to you and just see where is it that I can start helping out.
Thank you so much.
Have a wonderful day, guys.
All right, Ms. Stacy Brown and Ms. Kelly Wells, please. Excuse me, mister. I apologize.
Stacy Brown, Shreveport Bejaer Convention and Tourist Bureau and Shreveport Bejaer Sports Commission, 629 Spring Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. We're just here today to ask for the redesignation of Coach Billy Montgomery as the joint appointee for the Sports Commission Board. Back several years ago, the cities, the parishes, and the bureau all went together to start the Shreveport Bejaer Sports Commission. And as a part of that agreement, we decided that one joint appointment would be from all four of those agencies. And so that has been Billy Montgomery, Coach Billy Montgomery. He's here with us today if you have any questions.
Any questions? Well, I will just say then that Mr. Montgomery appears to be the most conceivably qualified person for this position, having reviewed his resume. And so I'm thankful that he's willing to continue to serve.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I will ask a question. And you're right, not only his resume, but his service and work in this community is impeccable. So, Mr. Montgomery, I just want to ask you a question. Can you go up to the mic for one second?
I appreciate y'all's remarks, but athletics has been a big deal in my life. And it's a good deal, and I appreciate y'all letting me do this a little bit longer. If, after that, I move on, let somebody else take it over.
What do you see, Coach? What do you see as the potential of what we are now and where we can go? What do you see us going from here with the Sports Commission?
The Sports Commission?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, we can only use the money, we can only use the money on the sports deal, you know, bringing somebody in from out of town and taking care of it. And we try to hope that we get that. We've had some good ones and probably had a few not as good. But we've brought in people here all the time, and that's all we've been spending money on. One thing that I say, when we voted on this, ever proceed, and the two parishes, ever one of them passed it. That's a pretty good thing. I never would have seen that happen in America. But so, we got some money, and we spend, we have to spend it on what we, as sports. And we just don't, can't just give it away. And the people, and I try to real hard, and I know that the board does. Y'all have two on it, and then there's other two in Cattle Parish, and the same thing in Bejaer Parish. And those eight people make those decisions or votes on it. And we, I just sort of sit up there and keep it, keep it from fighting a little bit. Thank y'all, though. Anybody has a question, I'll answer it.
Councilman Flair?
Greetings, Coach Montgomery. I know that you were great friends with my high school mentor, Don Stahl.
Yeah.
And he was a great pitcher, wasn't he?
Yes. A good guy, too.
Yeah, and a great guy. I need a commitment from you. Will you promise me, you see Councilman Bradford loves wrestling. And what do you think the possibility that us get him wrestling back here?
And get wrestlers back?
Yeah, some type of media will wrestle.
Wrestling, maybe. High school wrestling, or...
Oh, no, no. I'm talking about...
The real wrestling.
Mad dogs, mad dogs. Man, I ain't talking about no high school wrestling. I'm talking about the real thing. Because, see, Councilman Bradford, he's had his heart set on that. And just commit that you'll look into that.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kelly, let me ask you a question. You heard the conversation earlier. I didn't get all of it regarding the Fairgrounds Field. I'm referring to Kelly Wells now, Coach.
Okay, good. Get on it. If he gets paid, I don't get paid.
What's your, and I know it's not part of you making the, making the plea for Coach to be reappointed, but the conversation regarding the Fairgrounds Field. What's your view of that?
Well, I think the timing, you know, under Mayor Tyler's administration, we had met. And, you know, I've been doing this for about 18 or 19 years and don't have a lot of experiences. But some of the numbers that we provided were numbers from the last time that the Fairgrounds Field was used, back in 2010. I think as far as, and speak to Mayor Perkins as well. I've talked to a lot of baseball folks and other organizations. And, you know, I was just in Madison, outside of Huntsville, Madison, Alabama. They're building a new stadium. We did send out a letter of interest to the Texas and the Southern League. And even when we had the Dallas Mavericks and Pelicans play, the general manager of the Dallas came over and looked at it. He dabbles in independent baseball. Everybody's thoughts from that end would be, you know, rebuild the stadium along the riverfront or somewhere else. You know, a lot of these baseball stadiums and other facilities are used as an economic impact. So I think, which, and Shane Sharkey is a wonderful person. In fact, I met him. I don't know if y'all read the book Miracle in Shreveport. But I bought a few copies of that. And I think the timing of it all was part of it. But that's something that he's been working on for about a year and a half. I think there are some other locations. You know, I think just with the success and what, you know, the Mud Bogues have done with the Georgia's Pond at the Hirsch Coliseum. But with it being a single field venue, I think somebody spoke earlier about the youth baseball, you know, multiple field like Cargill, Tinsley, like what we have now has much more of an economic impact. But all I can speak to is, you know, those dollars are real. I think Shane's presentation today was nothing against, you know, the bond presentation coming out Thursday. I think it was just a result of a year and a half of his work. And so I think for all the folks who were involved, he wanted to share that with the council today. Is it at the top of the list of what we feel is necessary? It's not. But, you know, I think there are potential. I can tell that there are passionate folks. You know, as being the sports guy around the area, I do, it's one of the number one questions. You know, what are we doing with Fairgrounds Field? And so, again, all I know is, before it closed down, we had the LSU, I think it was NSU, play baseball over there. Since it's a single field, there's only certain things that can happen over there. But, you know, it's, I think it's, I think he just really wanted to take an eyesore that the city had been in, and we'd had some meetings with Mayor Tyler. So I think he was just wanting to share the culmination of a year and a half that he had worked on. But with all sincerity, he does not want to hold the bond up from that end. And you guys and ladies need to make the right decision. So I don't know what that decision is. But I just provided some economic impact from events that we had hosted over there before it closed down in 2010.
But certainly I want you guys to help and direct us in sporting situations. Back in January, we had a professional fight here. Is there anything like that on the drawing board, on the itinerary for any future events like that?
The, yeah, in January, I had the Showtime Boxing. You met Devin Haney. In fact, Devin's gonna be fighting on September the 13th at Madison Square Gardens. So he's gone undefeated, two more fights. If he wins in Madison Square Gardens on the 13th, then he'll fight for the belt as his next fight. And they did reach out, and that was a successful event. The dates they were looking at providing us weren't good dates. You know, Wednesday night's not a great date. But, you know, that was probably one of the favorite events that I did. Again, in January, it'd be in a slower month. So we are looking at different events. But right now, we don't have anything in the works for Showtime.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to claim my time back when Councilman Bradford gets to the floor.
You reclaim my time, yes.
I'm still on the floor. Mr. Chairman, is it possible that we could take action today on Coach Montgomery's confirmation? Is that possible?
Is that something to have to lay over? Or can we, if it is?
You can suspend the rules.
Can you suspend the rules?
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, if I could get a second.
Second.
Second by the chair.
See, he is ranked just like Sister Teresa. So there's no need us postponing it.
I agree. All right. It's been called by Councilman Flair and seconded by Councilman Green to suspend the rules?
On the Mother Teresa exception, Councilman?
Well, there's sister to me, you know.
Just suspend the rules to, make sure I get it right, man.
Yeah, we normally don't do these on Monday, and I wasn't thinking. Why don't we promise them that, why don't you promise them that we'll suspend the rules and do it tomorrow?
Okay, okay, okay.
Well, I'll be John Brown. One job you had, Arthur.
We can do that tomorrow.
Okay, we'll get you tomorrow, Coach.
We'll do it tomorrow.
That's all right.
I can't believe he turned, though.
I can't either.
Coach, you know, you're my friend.
He's the gospel. He said, want to keep us in line. We'll get you tomorrow.
You want me here?
No, I don't. Unless some of the others want. I can see you in my sleep tonight. I remember what you looked like.
Thank you. Thank you. Kelly, I appreciate you both.
Thank you.
There are no items on concern agenda, and Ms. Jones can we continue with items to be adopted?
All right, Resolution 107, authorizing Ms. Barbara M. Walker at 9772 Wallace Lake Road to make a connection to the City of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system. Resolution 108, accepting dedication for Sepulveda Strive Rights of Way in Lucian Fields Estates, Phase 2, Unit C. Resolution 109 is accepting the dedication for Sepulveda Strive and Ruton Avenue, Rights of Way in Lucian Fields Estates, Phase 2, Unit D.
Any discussion? Saying no, Ms. Jones?
Resolution 102, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the City of Shreveport and Burgundy Oats, here and after called owner, and acting herein through James A. Young, member for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Burgundy Ridge, Unit 13. Resolution 103, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the City of Shreveport and Burgundy Oats LLC, here and after called owner, and acting herein through James A. Young, member for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Burgundy Ridge, Unit 14. Resolution 104, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the City of Shreveport and Polestar Louisiana Shreveport LLC, here and after called owner, and acting herein through Karen J. Hutton, CEO for the Sanitary Sewer Main and related facilities to serve 412 West Birken's Industrial Loop. Resolution 105, authorizing the mayor to accept an acceptance of active donation between the City of Shreveport and Enable Midstream Partners LP, here and after called owner, and acting herein through Deanna Farmer, Executive Vice President and Chief Administrative Officer for the Brooks Road Water Main Extensions and Related Appartnances. Resolution 106, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the City of Shreveport and Southern Home Builders Inc., here and after called owner, and acting therein through Edward Ganey, President for the Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Extensions and Related Facilities to serve Newcastle Pines, Unit 1. Resolution 112, to support unified effort of the City Council, all City Administrative Officers and Departments, including Sportran, City Court, and Joint Ventures with Shreveport Green and private individuals and businesses to significantly reduce litter in Shreveport. Resolution 113, to recognize and to appreciate the life achievements and legacy of Caesar Carpenterer, C.C. Antoine, on the second week of September each year, who as a Louisiana State Senator from Cattle Parish, introduced a Senate bill in 1871 to incorporate... State Senator from Cattle Parish, introduced a Senate bill in 1871 to incorporate the City of Shreveport.
All right. Councilman Flair?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to your Resolution 105, could you tell us if Enable Midstream Partners LP is a Oklahoma cooperation?
She, well, let me get, she, well, yes, but let me get either CIO or Mr. Jeffrey to speak on 105.
Okay.
You can get back when you want.
Sure, we can have Patrick in come.
I do not know the.
The question is on the table at the time with the chairman being his Resolution 105.
Yes, sir.
Is, would Enable Midstream Partners LP be an Oklahoma cooperation?
I don't know, but I can find out for you.
We can find out, Councilman.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman Flair?
I believe that's going to be all, it's been going pretty fluid right now, so I believe it's good.
You didn't want to speak on, you want me to speak on 106?
106 is problematic, but it's okay. There's too much building going out there. All those houses, boy.
It's a bad thing?
Good thing.
I don't know what y'all got out there, the old mine or something, but y'all show built some houses.
You sound a little jelly over there, Mr. Flair.
I am a little bit jealous.
You haven't seen Lucian Field Estates?
You got butter and jelly.
Right, Ms. Jones, as you proceed with introduction of resolution.
Resolution 110, authorizing the mayor to make application with U.S. Department of Justice, Borjag Grant. Resolution 111, declaring a public emergency in connection with an emergency replacement of a manhole associated piping impertinences near the intersection of Corno Lucas and 3132, and ratifying the expenditure of approximately $452,322 of water and sewage revenue bond funds.
Councilman Nichols?
Mr. Chairman, Resolution 111 asks us to retroactively ratify the expenditure, as Ms. Jones said, of about $450,000 for an emergency repair that was initiated in February of this year. I don't question that the repair was necessary, it probably was, based on the information I pursued, but I do think that the council needs to consider enacting a rule or policy that requires the administration to come to us some reasonable period of time after an emergency. I understand there's no such rule in place right now. I'm not commenting that in this particular instance, the amount of time that has elapsed was unreasonable, but I do think that if the administration is going to spend more than public bid law allows on an emergency project, then the council needs to be asked to ratify that as soon as is practicable, and so I look forward to working with my colleagues to come up with a reasonable rule and to put that in place. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, we would like to be a part of that conversation, because we want to make sure that we're balancing some external factors that we deal with, with getting invoices from contractors and making sure that, you know, we have ample time for staff to scrutinize it and maybe going back and forth with contractors, in addition to the amount of time that it took to get the work to be done, to get done after it was started. So there was a little bit of back and forth, but definitely understand the concern, and we would like to be a part of that conversation so we can strike that, you know, the best balance.
Thank you. Councilwoman Flair?
Thank you, Chair. CIO Jones, I was just wondering what, if you could just tell us more about what happened and how normal or abnormal that is.
Sure, and we have Jeffrey Anderson, who's here, who had to deal with this closely, so we'll let him talk about the details.
Jeffrey, Councilman Flair?
I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
I was just wondering what, if there was some specific reason why it took so long in this case for us to get this information, and just if that was kind of a fluke or whatever, if this was really something that we need to, like, dip in the botox fund about?
Yeah.
So typically, on these type of repairs, they're done rather quickly, they're pretty small in scope. This one being a larger repair, it was initiated in early February. That work actually wasn't completed until a number of months later due to the groundwater table, the need to wellpoint. Additionally, its proximity to 3132 required an immediate excavation to shore up the soil to prevent undermining of the road there, and so that work had to be done immediately, and then the wellpointing, which took some amount of time to lower the groundwater table. This excavation was around 30 feet deep. It required basically stacking of multiple boxes, as well as shelving back the soils and some significant steel plating work to reinforce the soils around it. The work itself took approximately two and a half months. Along with that, the contractor has some period of time that they are still receiving invoices in on these larger jobs. I believe some of the most current-to-date invoices that were accumulated were in the second week of May or the first week of May, and so the invoicing from the contractor actually wasn't completed until mid-May. Given that time period, we then, you know, our staff goes through, reviews the work that's done, validates that with our, you know, reporting of the event, and then, yeah, it was May 14th before the contractor actually initiated his invoice. And so it took us a number of weeks to review this, because again, this one is very large, there was a lot of backup material, there's approximately 80 to 100 pages, as well as, you know, 400 working hours to account for, so.
It's almost like you had your own administrative decree right there.
Well, so this actually ran in parallel with quite a few of emergency projects that were going on in this same type of character. And so, given that, and then I do believe we also missed the legislation deadline for the last cycle as well, so.
Okay, that answers plenty. Yeah, I, I'm all fingers for this dip in the botox fund to come up with rules about that just yet, unless we start seeing it become like a bigger issue, because this sounds like it was something slightly more extraordinary than, you know, it wasn't like they did all the work in two weeks and we're just now getting the invoices. That would be a whole other story at that point. But yeah, you tell me, two months of stuff, and then like another several weeks to get the invoices, calculate all that stuff, and then you miss the last legislative date. Okay, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, real quick, before you walk off, is that, I'm assuming that's that project there on 3132?
Yes, sir.
Right at Corno Lucas, like in between the, the, on ramp?
Yes, sir, correct.
Yeah, that was quite an extensive project. It took quite a while, and so, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure what it was.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Jones?
I'm sorry.
When I looked at this, I had some questions, too. I guess the question is, does the law require the council to be notified as soon as the emergency is established, as soon as we know about it, or when the work is complete? I've always thought it was as soon as the administration realizes there's an emergency and they're going to spend more than the law allows, or is it after the project is complete? So I guess that's something that I'd like to see some gathered, so.
All right.
Did you all have some usable idea that you knew it'd be this much when the emergency started?
Well, we were also going by the administrative procedure, you know, that requires ratification of the city council by ordinance, so I don't know if we expected for it to be this long just because of it took so long for the flooding to get to a point where work could actually be done. So we were kind of anticipating when we could, you know, get it completed. I mean, it just took longer than we thought.
Attorney Cril?
Yes, sir, I did receive this question, and I did some research prior to council meeting, and I was not able to find any statutory or case law to give guidance in terms of a distinct deadline or guideline for deadlines for these types of situations. So if the council wanted to create legislation or create an administrative procedure to clarify that, that would be fine, but to answer the question that Mr. Thompson just raised, there is no legal guideline in terms of how long between the actual emergency and the notification of council or the governing body.
Okay.
And then, another thing, too, once, you know, we recognize this issue, we recognize that we have been doing kind of sort of a one-offs with addressing these emergency-type situations. So we are being proactive, and we are working on an emergency-type contract so that we can be able to address those things when they come and be within the bid law going forward, rather than having to come to you all with each of these types of emergencies.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's right.
All right. Introduction of ordinance, Ms. Jones?
Ordinance 107, amending the 2019 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 108, amending the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 109, amending the 2019 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Amending ordinance 110, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 111, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 Street Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 112, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 113, amending the 2019 Street Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 114, amending the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 115, authorizing the mayor to exchange surplus to be owned immovable property and all improvements thereon located at 3406 Velva Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109, commonly referred to as the former Fire Station Eight. Ordinance 116, amending Sections 58-117 and 58-118 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shreveport. Ordinance 117, zoning case number 19-362-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Greenwood Road, approximately 125 feet west of Broadway Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from I-1 Light Industrial District to IMU, industrial mixed-use district. Ordinance 118, zoning case number 19-371-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Greenwood Road and Maywood Drive, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District to I-1 Light Industrial District.
All right. There's no discussion? Ms. Jones, ordinance on secondary and final page.
Ordinance 78, adding Section 26-220 affidavit attesting that city contract was not secured through employment or payment of solicitor to finance, to Chapter 26 Finance, Article Six Contracts, Division One, generally of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, relative to requirement of an affidavit for city contracts. Ordinance 92, amending Chapter, excuse me, amending Chapter One, general provisions, general provisions of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, relative to misdemeanor offenses. Ordinance 94, amending Section 26-274, execution of contracts associated with purchases of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 99, amending various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code. Ordinance 100, amending Division Five, Article Nine of Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances, relative to food truck vendors. Ordinance 101, annexation tag number 19-1, and ordinance to annex attractive land in Section Three and in Section 34, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, and to the city limits of the City of Shreveport. Ordinance 102, annexation tag number 19-2, and ordinance to annex several properties along Merriweather Road in Section 33, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, into the city limits of the City of Shreveport. Ordinance 102, annexation tag number 19-2, and ordinance to annex several properties along Merriweather Road in Section 33, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, into the city limits of the City of Shreveport. Ordinance 103, annexation tag number 19-3, and ordinance to annex a portion of the Southern Loop roadway in Sections 19, 20, 29, and 30, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, into the limits of the City of Shreveport. Ordinance 104, annexation tag 19-4, and ordinance to annex property in the Novocare Phase One subdivision in Section Eight, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, into the city limits of the City of Shreveport. Ordinance 105, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 106, amending and reenacting certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances.
I was confused about something I got in there.
Mr. Chairman, just thank you. Everybody got the email on ordinances number 94 and 78, and the reason that they are back on the agenda, and that it takes two-thirds vote to, must readopted by two-thirds vote if you're going to override the veto.
Entertainer legislation, Mr. Thompson?
I'm not aware of, no, there is none.
We have no protestant appeal today, no empty seat pills tomorrow, and no other appeals, am I correct?
That's correct.
And reports from office and boards are committed. Seeing none. Coach, report, Mr. Thompson?
The mayor made certain appointments. One was to the Shreveport Boja Sports Commission. I've lost a friend, Billy Montgomery, but he can be confirmed tomorrow. The zoning board of appeals, Brittany Dunn, civil service board, Brian Hollis, Hasem Jones, Hasem Jones, Henry Walker, Jonathan Scroggane, and Ebony Norris.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I haven't been able to request for speak here, I believe mine's working now.
All right, Councilman Flair?
Mayor, Mr. Walker, Henry Walker. Is he still the head of ACL U?
No, not anymore.
My question, thoughtful, I need, he's not any longer, so that'd be okay, because Howard, to me, would have a conflict.
Yeah, he would.
So you're going to check, check all that out.
Yeah, he's no longer, and he'll be here tomorrow as well to answer any questions about.
All these people here on the civil service board, they're residents of Shreveport?
Yes, we've checked into the, let me look at Africa to confirm. Oh, she's not, yeah, we've checked into residents.
Brian Hollis has been on there before.
He has.
He's a real one.
He's the only real one.
Okay. Mr. Jones and Mr. Walker, I assume they probably live where Councilwoman put this?
Walker lives in Council and Nicholson's District.
Yeah, and Jones is in 12 Oaks.
And so is Scoggan and Norris, they're both probably residents of Shreveport.
Scoggan is 12 Oaks as well.
Okay, that's all I question, I have to thank you.
All right. We have no executive session. If there's nothing else in this meeting, Mr. Thompson?